Take pause, this needs an order. Set the record show and ultimate issue for present. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Okay, we have nobody in citizens comments. Let's go now to, I don't know, five second public hearing of proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2016 on the 17th. Anyone who want to speak on it or against it? Okay. Nobody? All right. Okay, any, anybody want to speak for or against the tax rate? Or against it? Okay, if not, the hearing is closed. That's it, anybody want to speak on the public hearing for post-tax rate? All right, next, we have the budget workshop. Anybody want to speak for or against the public?
Against, for or against the budget workshop?
Oh, no, it's a budget workshop, I'm sorry.
I'd like to.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Well, what I, I have two requests. One request is, I'd like to withdraw my request for an additional employee in my prison, in my, in my department. I understand the budget constraints, I understand the cash flow issues, I understand the West Gate, I understand that you guys have a tedious job to deal with. Yet, in dealing with the problems that exist in the community, as you know, in all the precincts, there's a job to be done, we're not going to back up, we're going to do it, we're going to tackle it. You know, a person living next to a, in a residential lot, next to a jungle, rat infested, snake infested, it's hard to explain to him, there is, you know, excuses only satisfy the person that makes it, and sometimes not even the person that makes it. He, he doesn't care about cash flow issues, or reimbursement on this, that, or the other. So what I, my second request is, I'd like this court, and I have two people that are, I would say that I would list them above, no one above them as far as their dedication to, to their jobs and what they do. I would like my salary increase, whatever it be as it stands now, or if it's adjusted depending upon what the budget, my salary increase could be divided equally and placed on top of what the increase of my employees would be. They're going to be doing, two people are going to be doing the job of three this year, but we are going to tackle this issue in the, this existing in almost every precinct without exception. This is my request, and I would certainly appreciate action out of it. Thank you, Judge.
That's very admirable. That's impressive. Okay. Can anybody else want to speak on the budget?
We had set aside money to give the county or treasurer a position of a accountant. It's been brought to my attention that we don't intend to hire an accountant, we just intend to promote what we have. That was not the intent of this court, I don't believe. And if that is the case, I don't think it solves our problem, and I would like to see us just put it back the way it was.
Do we need to, do we need to rescind that, or can we just?
Have you all adopted any?
No. No.
We had just-
So all we need to do is just, is that a motion?
I will make that into a motion.
Can any more discussion on it?
Well, we had, we had taken action to put it in the proposed budget.
We did take a vote.
So now we're going to rescind it?
Yeah, after the public hearing.
Well, this isn't a public hearing. This isn't a workshop.
And we did take a vote, so we need to take another vote on this.
My motion is to put it back the way it was, with the part-time employee, and then the salaries that we had in the original.
There's a motion and a second. Anyone discussion?
Two seconds left. Okay. So, can you explain your, your motion? We had asked that he bring in-
We had asked that he, that he hire a certified CPA-
Right.
-to assist him.
Okay.
It was brought to my attention that he has made it clear that we cannot tell him what to do, and that he is just going to promote the two people that he has up. I don't think that solves the problem that we have in the auditor's office, I mean, in the treasurer's office.
Okay, does he have a CPA on staff?
I don't, I don't know if there's certified CPA or not. I think they're an accountant, but not a certified CPA.
She's got an accounting degree.
She's got an accountant.
She's got an accounting degree, but not a CPA. And we specifically requested a CPA.
We got to have help in that department, we got to have somebody that understands those pieces. That was, that was my intention when we did this, to start with.
Okay, any other questions? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, or opposed, nobody? Anything else on the budget?
Frank, I'm sorry, Frank. No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just missed the last meeting, and I would like to know if there were any changes to my budget?
No.
No?
No changes.
Thank you, General.
Would you like for there to be, would you like for there to be changes?
Not really.
Let's not have to be.
Yes, Mr.?
Yes, sir. My name is Sid Malaga.
Come up here.
If you don't mind. I missed that, when you asked if there's anything to say on the public hearing on the tax rates?
Right.
The reason I missed it is because I was waiting for some people to show up. Obviously, they didn't know where, they were supposed to be here or not, so I just wondered, you know, what was the result from the tax rate?
We have, we just, nobody, we just opened up the hearing for for against the tax rate, that's it.
Okay, but have you all decided?
No, it's not been voted on.
Not voted on, sure, no. Okay, because I, back again, I would have been here by myself this morning. I'd mentioned it to these people, which also they're all concerned of not getting the tax rate changed.
That meeting to adopt it or anything, that's on the 12th?
The 6th.
6th?
6th. Okay. And back again, I'm bringing people, but obviously, the working people that I talked to, they said, well, I can't make it, but they were able to make it here. Just for you all to know that, obviously, there's a lot of citizens out there against it. So hopefully, you all can find a, a different solution to that problem, and hopefully, our citizens don't pay for that price.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just for, it will be on, the adoption of whatever we do will be on the 6th.
The 6th, yes.
I think we said it for the-
The 6th.
12th.
12th.
We had something on the 6th, but we were-
There was a meeting on the 6th, but the actual adoption of the rate, adoption of the budget was-
The 12th.
That's a regular meeting.
Okay.
Don't we need to, it's on, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and for your record, when we have a hearing or a citizens comment, is a time that you're allowed to come up here and speak for or against it, okay? Now, we are going to have one on the 6th, and then another one on the 12th when we adopt it. So you do have a chance, both at the time, okay? Right, yeah.
Okay, that, I, I just, there, we have a public hearing on the budget.
On the 6th.
On the 6th.
We're done with the public hearings on the-
Yeah, the public hearings on the tax rates are done, all we have to do is-
I'll have to.
-adopt it.
Okay.
So on the 6th is budget, on the 12th is new.
Okay, any other?
And also, a point of order to clarify, on the 12th, the place to speak, if they still want to speak on the tax rate would be during citizens comment.
Right.
It won't be as public hearings.
Right. Okay. And on the 12th, when you come in, there's a sheet that you sign, and I will hear all the, if you, if there's 10 of you, we'll listen to all 10 citizens. Okay? Any other comment?
Okay, we're on the budget.
Yeah, we're talking about it.
I visited with you last week, Frank, about this tax note 2016, $350,000 we have in there.
Yes.
About possibly moving that payment until the next fiscal year, instead of budgeting in this fiscal year, so we can remove it out of this budget, and, and put it where the payment would become due in November of, not this coming November, but the following November.
2017.
Which then would line the, closer line up the interest and sinking fund with the tax rate that we have. I think you had visited with somebody at the, Raul Viosenor's office.
Yes.
And they said that was possible.
Yes.
So that we could take that $350,000 out and re, instead of having it in this fiscal year's budget, to get that tax rate back.
Yes.
To where it is.
Yes, that, that's a possibility, yes. They, they can do that. It's just a matter of, of, when you issue, I've, I've informed them that that was a possibility, and I told them there would probably be a discussion on that today, and so they said it was not a big issue to change the date. The original dates that they were talking to their bankers about were February, August payment, interest payment in February, and interest and principal in August. And I asked if it could be, the interest and principal could be scheduled in October, November, and they said that was not an issue. They, they could do that.
And that would get the, the, the interest and sinking fund a little closer into what the tax rate is that we have set for, and I know it's not going to balance it, but it's going to get it closer.
Yes. And with the 2013 tax note being paid off in 1617, that $315,000 or payment will disappear in the 1718 budget.
And then all we'd have to do is, is just have the one payment, instead of, like we do this year, for two payments. Well, I mean, I would like to see us do that, and then remove it out of here, so that we can get that closer to balancing within that. It's still, the, the four cents is still not going to balance in sinking fund.
No.
And we're still going to be short balancing the interest and sinking fund by, if we take that out, it was like three cents.
Yes.
Somewhere around in there, which was the old rate that we used to have, or about eight.
It would be, it would be a lot closer to that, yes.
What would be the issuance timeframe of the tax note?
There would be no, no difference.
No difference.
The issuance would still be the same. We would just delay the payment, so that it wouldn't be in this budget, and then we would just maintain the 350 in the following year's budget, instead of have two principal and interest payments since the 2013 tax note will be paid off this, this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year. And that, that frees up some of that funds. So I'd like to see it removed out of there, and move the, 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 the payment into the November of 2018?
1718.
1718. That would bring us closer to balancing the interest and sinking fund. And I'll make that into a motion.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Anyone discussion? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So you, the payment, just to be clear, the payment would be the 350 or the 315?
315.
Okay.
The 350 would be coming out. The 315 would still remain for this year's.
But it, but, but the payment in 2017, 2018 would be the 350?
Yes.
Yeah, not the 315.
Yeah, no, I mean, we would have to readjust the 315 to 350.
Yeah, just, yeah, it's closer than that.
No, no, I understand, but it would be the 350, that's the only thing that I have a problem with, not, not 315 with 350.
350.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Thank you. Anything else on the budget?
Um, you had, Commissioner brought up some stuff on the, on the accounts, different accounts. We were actually in Austin-
The special funds?
Yes.
Yeah.
We were actually in Austin this past week, and one of the classes dealt with some of the special accounts. There is, I think Anna actually worked on it.
Some, yeah.
Some. I, I think if we're going to do this, we need to go each specific account, one by one, because there is different set of rules for the different accounts.
See, Commissioner Middleton has a book?
Yeah.
I didn't have that.
Now, we all got the book. And, and up there, there was even some, one of the deals, I think, was with Records Management. One, one of the classes was on that, and then on what the funds could be used for. And I, I think even on that one, I guess the biggest thing was that we've been told all along that we can't touch, we can't touch, while we were sitting here and, and listening to these classes up there. Basically, a lot of the stuff has to come back before the court.
My biggest concern of all the funds is the records archives, because y'all are supposed to adopt a plan, an annual plan, before the funds can be spent, so I don't know if that's ever happened.
It took a long time.
I don't think it hasn't been.
The, the Records Management and Prevention Fund is under the control of Commissioner's Court. County Records Prevention Account is under the control of Commissioner's Court, and all those have to be prepared in a budget, adopted and set. It's very clear about what you can do with them. Some of these things can be used for traveling trainings, some of them can be used. We have stuff in this budget for capital outlay that can come out of these special funds.
And the, the one I was having problems with are the different tech funds that we have, not the JP funds, those are real clear, but there's a county court at law tech fund, but there's not a, a tech fund for the courts in general, I don't think. So, do you have that? Is tech in there?
They're all in here. The, let's see, County Records Technology and Infrastructure Fee, County Court, Courthouse Security Funds, County and District Clerk Technology Fund.
And the concern is that it might be collected, I don't know if it's being collected, but just not being accounted for properly.
And that may be the case. Most of these funds are controlled by Commissioner's Court, with the exception of the hot check funds and the forfeiture funds, the rest of them are pretty much controlled by Commissioner's Court. They require a budget, they require a court to adopt the budget, and set what the expenditures are going to be.
And I, I think you, you've been looking at it here, here lately a little bit closer.
Yeah.
I, I guess the, how do we make sure that this gets done right, now that we know that there's an issue? And now that we're trying to tackle it, I mean, we even need to fix it.
Yeah, you need to include in the budget, it would help if Commissioner Middleton let me his book. Because I was here for three hours, I was looking at each one by step.
I'm sorry, you should have thought.
You never did get the book.
No. But tax doesn't, doesn't work with the, with the attorneys. Tax will give you all the information, but-
But no, this didn't come from tax, this came from Bickerstaff.
Oh.
No, it's not.
Oh, that book is tax.
Yeah, well, it's tax.
If it was Bickerstaff, I'd be upset.
They have one?
Yes, they have one too.
Yes. But bottom line, we need, we need a budget for, for each special fund, and that has to be approved along with our budget. And any expenses compared to what we've been told before have to come before the court, before the expenses are made.
That's correct, yes, very much so.
There's a, there's stuff in here for capital outlay, for, that can be taken out. District Clerk has a workstation, $25,200, software, $12,500, that can come out of the technology funds, those, those don't need to come out of this budget.
Some of the stuff that went up there on that records retention or whatever, that stuff can be used even for computers for the judges, who are sitting on the bench.
We have-
That was, Commissioner Middleton, that was my question, because there is a technology fund for the court, but the only thing that's being accounted for is the county court at law technology fund, so I don't know.
Those are controlled by the court.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that in the special accounts, there is not an account of that type.
Oh, those are the only ones that, tax in us that exist by law, they're supposed to be collected now. If there's something else that's going on, that's a whole nother conversation.
Yes, they may be collected, but it may be that they're not being funded, put in, you know, accounted for.
Yeah.
And some of these funds, I could use it for personnel or other things, the department that has the fund and uses the fund, that, they get to be reimbursed in there, but that's what gets really complicated, that there's some reimbursement to some of the departments because of, they're using the fund. But for the most part, like you said, there's just-
Yeah, but we, we, we talked about it again this year, I mean, my thing is, how do you fix it? What, what's going to be the process to fix this, to make sure that, that if it has to come before the court, we don't want them to keep going out and spending the money, even the old way, we need to fix it.
Well, the first thing we need to do is ensure that the funds are being collected, because if they are, they need to have been accounted for separately, and doesn't the pressure do that?
It's in our audit, is it not? All the special funds are in our audit. The list, all the funds and the money that were collected.
Right, but whenever they collect court costs, they're divided out, and I think they go to the county treasurer.
All money, yeah, it's all supposed to go to the county treasurer.
And the county treasurer disperses, so, but he disperses to the comptroller, or he disperses to the county, but he's supposed to put which accounts they go into, right?
Yes.
And, and what I'm saying is, I think those fees are being collected, but there's not an account set up for them, so that I don't know where the money's going.
And that may be the case.
There's also a family protection fund that the district clerk should collect on divorces, we don't have, we don't have an account for that. So, that's what I'm saying, they're probably collecting it, but we're not using it the way it's supposed to be used.
Which is the account that there's a $25, and the court's supposed to pursue $22.50 or what?
That is, oye, it's the records retention out of the district, oh no, the criminal, the criminal records retention. It's another criminal.
The $25 fee to $22.50 that's supposed to come back to the court.
Yeah, $22.50, yes, and $2.50 goes to the clerk. So that's, you know, that, that's my concern, is not so much at this point, what you guys are going to do with the money, but the fact that I don't think we have all the money, the, what we're exposed to.
We don't have a, we don't have an audit where you can show those accounts, or you don't have those accounts.
Teresa sent, Teresa sent Anna a list of all the accounts.
This is what I have, this is what I'm reading.
Oh, okay, that's where they came from.
So.
Yeah, that was done on Thursday.
And there's a, there's a lot of funds in there that I don't think we collect at all, but, and they may not apply to every county, but there's a bunch of stuff, I haven't seen.
Teresa sent Anna a list of, on Thursday, of all the accounts that are collected, the dollar amount.
And the way we can figure out which funds are being collected is by getting a bill of costs from the county clerk and the district clerk, because that outlines all the fees that are being collected, and that way you know if those fees are actually being put in the proper fund.
My only, my biggest issue is that there's, according to the last year's audit, there's 2. something million dollars sitting in those special funds. It's over $2 million, all of them, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about everything.
Something that concerns me, Commissioner, is that some of these accounts have maximum amounts that they can charge for certain fees, and we are overcharging it, in, in some of them, and these additional charges have been brought up or installed without coming approval from the court.
Again, if we had the bill of costs, we could verify what costs they're charging, what fees are coming in, and if they're being accounted for properly, and if they're the proper costs.
But, but one of the things that you, that we talked about yesterday was that some of these, either are biannual or annual, that have to come before the court for the piece to be adopted, and that hasn't happened.
And for those accounts that we are overcharging, do we need to go back and readjust?
We don't know what we need to do at this point.
Will you find out for us, please?
Well, if I get bills of costs from the clerks, I can do that.
Okay.
So are you going to ask, or do we need to ask for them to be sent to you?
You need to ask, because I'm very shy.
I make a motion that all the clerks present to the county attorney a what?
Bill of cost for the criminal and civil cases.
Bill of cost for criminal and civil cases.
And you want to include-
Both county and district clerk.
You want to include all the records management accounts?
All records management accounts, every, all, all, all accounts collected through those departments.
Second. Okay, the motion and a second, any more discussion on this side?
The, the thing that I'm having the issue with is, we're sitting down here staring down the back and doing a two cent tax increase, and we got over $2 million sitting in these funds, that some of this stuff in this budget can come out of, and can be used. Not all of it, and I get we can't use it all, I'm not advocating that, but there are things in this budget that can be paid for out of these, that can be paid for out of these accounts, so that the general fund does not have to pick up all of the costs.
You're right, and the worst part, Commissioner, and, and you know as well as anybody here is that we've known about these accounts being there, the money being there, but we've been continually told that we cannot use it, so.
You know, that's, that's my heartburn with, with doing a tax increase when we're sitting here with all of this stuff that's available to us.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's shame on us, though. You know, we hadn't, if we hadn't done something, I mean, by now, that's, again, shame on us, we need to fix it.
Okay, any more discussion on it? There's a motion and a second. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. And all those opposed? Nobody? All right, anything else?
Um, I got a couple of issues, and these are long-term issues, they're not things we can resolve in this budget, but we need to look at long-term. Our payroll and our insurance costs are becoming a large part of this budget. I think at some point, we need to look at ways to offer retirement incentives, to try to get our payroll costs back down, and to also look at our insurance options, by looking at adjusting the deductibles on the insurance, and see what the savings are, and look at possibly assisting the employees with a health savings account to make up the difference, and raising the deductibles to lower some of these costs. These costs are continuing to go up, up, you know, our payroll consumes, what is it, about 70% of our payroll fund budget?
It'll be close to 60%.
60%. And those costs are continuing to go up, and if we can offer opportunities, you know, our base pay is 5.5 million, our current pay is 8.5 million. If we can offer incentives and opportunities for employees, we can't fix it this year, I understand we can't fix it this year, but as we go along this year, we need to have some lengthy discussions about how we're going to get those costs back under control.
And I agree with you, Commissioner, several years I've asked that we go out for bids for health insurance, and for, for the linguine tax attorneys, and some of these big contracts need to be bid out, see what else is out there. There may be something better, something less expensive, but if we don't bid it out, we don't know. We've had this same health plan for about eight years now, and we need to go out, we go out for asphalt, and sand, and gravel, and janitorial services, which are minimal expenses, why shouldn't we go out for the ones that are larger expenses?
Yeah, anything else?
So we go.
Anybody else want to comment on the budget?
Judge, do you call for a motion in my request?
Yes, I do. No motion. Okay?
I've got something.
Go ahead.
On, the way we prepared this budget, and on the last year's budget, on the second page, we have allocated other portions of the general fund to specific uses on this one page. One of these bonding agencies questioned that just this past week. And what I would like to do is, instead of not including the $910,000 in this beginning cash number, and allocating that out separately on this one page, I would like to do that within the budget. So include the, all, all the cash in the general fund in one number, and put these line items within the budget. So it wouldn't be changing the, the bottom line effect, but it would be changing how it's presented.
I think that's a good idea.
Go ahead, Jim.
Would that be okay to do that?
So you remove it from back financing and put it into?
There'll be a line of, like, the, the balances that are remaining in the 2013 tax note, those would be put into those specific department's budget. And so it won't show separately here, it'll be encompassed within the, the overall operating budget.
And then you readjust your beginning cash balances to, to-
To include those items.
Include all those items.
So, specifically, it's going to be the 910 financing, the, uh, money that's set aside for the county software and IT and the 2013 remaining balances.
Beginning cash balance of the 910 would, wouldn't, it wouldn't be in the general fund. It'd be in the interest sinking fund.
No. The, the repayment is in the interest and sinking fund. The $910,000, um, is in the general fund.
That's a good idea.
Then, then you'll readjust the balances and show the actual beginning cash balances of everything and then we'll just create basically like departments or whatever, for each one of the expenditures.
Like, for example, uh, in that 2013 tax note, precinct one has $6,008 for me. And so, I'd put that $6,008 within precinct one's operation.
Would you do a separate line item for that?
Yes, yeah, because I, I want to distinguish that it's for that tax note. So, the following year, you don't think will operate as wise or as much.
And then you'll do the same thing for the auctioned equipment and then the, the Loop 79 and then the-
Not, not 79. 79 is, is actually specific. That, that has to be, um, my understanding is that money, that $172,000, that, some of that can be used for this, any work that's associated with roadwork, uh, getting to the new West Gate.
Yes.
So, if, if that's okay, I'll, I'll do that. I don't think, I need a motion. I just need to, it's just rearranging the design.
No, you don't need a motion.
Okay.
It wouldn't be clear if you had.
I'll make a motion to allow the county auditor to, uh, readjust those line items as described.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody?
There was another thing. I had visited with you, Frank, about the GEO money. I would like to see that come out of the general fund and create a special revenue account so it doesn't, and I know you're not gonna like that.
I don't like it for the same reason that I've just done this. Those bonding agencies are gonna have a fit.
Why are they gonna have a fit? It's special revenue.
You are designating funds out and that's what they're having an issue with. In the prior year, we had 1.1 million dollar cash balance, undesigned and just designated within the budget. This past year, when we set this budget up, you remember, we, we set out that $910,000 for the waterline project, the livestock pens. And so, in the audit, there's an undesigned fund number, so that dropped from 1.1 million to 257,000. So, anytime that happens, those bonding agencies, uh, got questions. And so, I'm trying to avoid those questions. It would, I, I believe it's gonna help with, if y'all are gonna go out for another rating this, this next year, it'll help, uh, in increasing that rating.
So, just leave the, the way it is.
And I, I understand what you're saying, but it gives an unrealistic picture. It shows a $38 million budget when in reality, it's a $15 million budget.
Yeah.
It's not a $38 million budget because if that money comes in and goes out.
It's out.
We retain part of it and I understand that, but we don't retain $23 million of it, you know? So, it, it makes the, the, the budget look inflated when you're sitting here with 39, 38, 39 million when in reality, it's a 15, 16 million budget. That's what it really is.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
But our auditor, our external auditor has even said that we needed to, I mean, they're taking into consideration that it is inflated, that basically we do have a $15 million budget because what they've always asked for was a reserve on the 15 million, not on the 38 million. So, I mean, they're looking at it. When our external auditor comes in, they're looking at it that it is, it's not really part.
That's, that's correct. There's, there's also, um, there are several articles this past, past two or three weeks that the federal government is wanting to utilize more of their Bureau prisons and they're looking to eliminate any private company placement of prisoners, so.
But, but one of the things, I mean, when that first came out, I think the sheriff was actually in a meeting with, uh, the warden, remember I called him? Uh, and one of the things that it's, their polyone effect is our immigration, is that right? And that's what we have.
I think, I think the one, the one around the border probably in the state.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I called him as soon as that article came out and immigration is one of the things that it's not gonna affect as much and that's what we have here.
Okay. Any other thing?
Frank, how many more years do we have to go on the SL79? What was that, a 20 year or 15 year? 12 year?
I think it was 12.
I think it was 12. We got about another, you know, seven, eight years.
Eight years. Have, have we ever exceeded the minimum amount, guaranteed amount?
No.
No?
The traffic count this past year, about 60%, but traffic was very small before that, so.
Right.
What will rate increase it is gonna be this West Gate usage.
Right. And, uh, are there still monitoring?
Yep.
Okay.
Every month.
Okay. Okay, anything else? If not, this means adjourned.